...time I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the July Board Meeting for the Penrich School Board. Please join me in seating the flag.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Cron, would you call the board, please?
Mr. Casper?
Here.
Mr. Demming?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Elmo?
Here.
Mr. Sardis?
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Yardley?
Here.
Dr. Urnel?
Here.
Thank you. Next, we are going to have recognition of some staff members. I believe Dr. Radigan has a few words on this subject.
Okay, good evening. Good evening. Testing. Thank you, Dr. Urnel. Yes, tonight on behalf of the Penrich School Board and the administration and our special guest, Representative Clymer, we are recognizing five individuals for their sound decision-making and professionalism after the skydiving accident that most of you probably heard about that happened at Guth Elementary School on July the 8th. Around 11:00 a.m., students were just coming in from the recess. We have a couple summer programs that were happening at that school. And Mr. Randy White, just like a normal day in the summer, was out cutting the lawn. He is the facilities manager there. All of a sudden, he saw a reflection in the glass of this bright orange color. He turns around and within 20 feet of him, unfortunately, two skydivers had crash-landed and were moaning. He immediately called the office where Mrs. Janet Kressman, the school secretary, answered the phone and immediately called 911. She then quickly alerted Ms. Priscilla Ponus, the acting principal of the situation. Not knowing what to expect outside, Ms. Ponus quickly gathered up Mrs. Deb Cantor, the school nurse, and Mr. Scott Ware, who our special ed supervisor who was overseeing the ESY program, to go to the scene. Needless to say, it was a very horrific sight. Through it all, they remained extremely calm. Ms. Ponus actually called for a shelter in place, so she called back into the office to Mrs. Kressman. The professional staff there knew exactly what to do and were able to shield the students and the staff from all the activity that was about to ensue. Mr. Scott Ware acted as a kind of running back and forth for items that were needed. Ms. Ponus and Ms. Cantor stayed there with Mr. White and comforted the victims. And Mrs. Cantor, because of her background in nursing, knew things to do and not do, which were very critical when she realized that these gentlemen were obviously going to need surgery. So basically, tonight, we are recognizing them for being the true first responders of a very horrific situation. I'd like to call them up, please, to the front to receive a certificate, and then Rep. Clymer would like to recognize them. And I know Ms. Ponus wants to say a few words on their behalf, but please help me in welcoming Mr. Randy White, Mrs. Janet Kressman, Ms. Priscilla Ponus, Mrs. Deb Cantor, and Mr. Scott Ware. I know Mr. Ferry wants to get a candid Kodak moment here of this group, but Rep. Clymer, would you like to join us? And thank you for being here with us to recognize this special group of people.
Thank you, Rep. Thank you, Sue, for Ken Radigan. And I too want to express my appreciation for the good job that you've done under very unusual circumstances. People would say, well, they would expect that. No. Too often, we hear where there's an emergency and people either don't come out to help the person or persons in need, or they call someone else to go out. But you responded because you had the character and you had the willingness to want to help someone who is in need. And I think that speaks volumes. So I too thank you on behalf of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for showing to be good role models. You know, in this society in which we live, we need moments of refreshment, of uplifting, of times when we can point and say, here are people who've done something worthwhile for their fellow human being, for mankind. And so I too want to extend my deepest appreciation and thanks for your willingness and for your wanting to get there and to help and to play that very important role. And I have citations with me this morning that I would, this afternoon, that I would be very honored to give to each one of you. So I will do that at this time.
I should point out also that because of the quick action of these folks, the helicopters and emergency vehicles came to the scene very quickly, and the gentlemen were both airlifted to different hospitals and are both recuperating. So their lives were saved, and I think a lot of it had to do with these five, I really do. And Ms. Ponus, I know you said you wanted to say a few words.
On behalf of all of us, we extend our gratitude for this public recognition. When working in a school, you never know the joys and the challenges that you're going to face from day to day. This particular day was quite traumatic for all of us, and fortunately, it turned out well. We are grateful that the children were not harmed and did not experience or see any of this accident. And we are grateful for the fact that those two skydivers are alive. That is amazing to us. I feel fortunate that I was working with Penrich faculty and staff who knew how to respond at an emergency and who understood the safety procedures implemented. We may have had a different outcome if we had not had the professionalism and expertise and if they were not familiar with district protocol. I am also extremely grateful for the Percocet Police, the Percocet Fire Department, the member from the FAA who was on site, and the emergency medical teams that were dispatched by area ambulances and helicopters. They worked in unison and collaboratively, and they took all of this, this whole incident, accident, happened in one hour. From the time the accident took place at 11:00, and it was over, and they were airlifted to area hospitals at 12:00. Afterwards, in order to make sure all the medical waste was gone and the site was investigated by the FAA, an additional 45 minutes ensured that upon looking at the playground, I knew that it was safe for the kids to return back out there again, as everything appeared as if no accident had ever happened there. During my time substituting at Grass and now at Guth, it is evident to me that Dr. Radigan is actively involved and interested in our students. I especially appreciate her strong leadership, her compassion, and the genuine interest that she demonstrates in providing what's best for our children. She is frequently present in our buildings, and I have no doubt and every bit of confidence that the district is in good hands. I thank all of you for supporting all of us. Know that we recognize all the work that you do as board members in ensuring that your children, our children, are your primary focus. Know that it is very much appreciated because I know your work just doesn't stop at attending these meetings and goes far beyond. So thank you for this recognition and know that we're very appreciative for being a member of the Penrich School District.
Thank you all for being such wonderful exemplars for our students and other staff members. And Representative Clymer, thank you very much for taking time out of your schedule to come tonight. It would be certainly appreciated. At this point, we'll move to questions and comments from guests. I do not have any names on the public sign-up sheet. Is there anyone who would like to speak before the beginning of the board meeting? If not, we'll move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar obviously involves the minutes of the June 23 board meeting, the bills list, the April projects bills, the food service and student activities bills, and the financial reports listed below, as well as the superintendent's personnel report. Are there any items on this collection that board members would like to have voted on separately? Not? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as listed? And a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Demming and seconded by Mr. Casper to approve the consent calendar. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next item on the list is the student liaison report. As you can see tonight, we do have a member, a student liaison representative here from the high school. The name card says Nathan Callums, but I don't believe that is the man behind the card. So if you would please, could you introduce yourself, as well as if you have something to say on tonight's meeting?
Well, my name is Liam Kerr. My name is Liam Kerr. I'm the vice president of Student Council. Nick's not here tonight. He's actually at leadership conference. I wanted to thank you, the school board, and Dr. Urnel for having me here tonight. And there's a few events coming up in the beginning of the school year I would like to let you know about. Pinkout, which is an annual breast cancer awareness fundraiser that we have. It's going to be on October 2nd, 2014, and we give all the proceeds to Grand View Hospital. And then homecoming is on October 24th to 25th. October 24th is the game, and we are assuming it's at Helmand Field this year, and so that's what we're planning on. We're working with the Penrich Regional and the Percocet Police at the moment for a parade. It's going to be a little bit different this year, so it's kind of new to us, but... And then the 25th will be the homecoming dance, and we're currently working on planning that. Student orientation is July 20th, or freshman orientation is August 28th, and that's going to be Key Club, Student Council, NHS, and Student Ambassadors that's going to be helping out with that event. And other than that, that's basically the beginning of the school year. We're eager to start working with the new principal and with the administration. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will see representative from the high school at each of our board meetings. But next, in terms of the president's report, I would simply note that normally July is a fairly quiet time in the school district. In fact, the board itself rarely has a meeting, I shouldn't say rarely, but often does not have a meeting like this in July. As can be seen from the agenda, tonight is a bit different, and there are a lot of things that need to be addressed tonight. I would also note, though, that it's become a very active season, relatively speaking, in terms of some of the issues that are very important to the board and to the district. Specifically, obviously, the 600-pound gorilla in the room, meaning the pension issue, is in the paper fairly frequently, and not surprisingly so, because it has a major impact on virtually everything we do. And it has had a major impact on the downgrading of the bond rating for the state Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. That's most unfortunate for all of us, because it means for the same amount of money used that more money will be spent due to the lower bond rating. And you can also tell from the ads on television and just from the discussion in the newspapers that the gubernatorial race, which usually languishes during the summer, at least that's been my experience, has heated up. And one of the interesting things about it from my perspective is that the whole issue of funding of public education is one of the forefront issues, perhaps the forefront issue, in those discussions. So it's very different than it normally is, and I simply think, again, I will note that anyone in the audience who could or should contact their representative or senator to express their interest in having pension reform, because it's something that we talk about but has not happened yet. And obviously, if it does not happen, the cost will continue to rise, or at least that's the projection that we face. And that means that this is the time when Dr. Radigan and her staff will be putting together the first remnants of the budget for the 2015-2016 school year, no mean task because of the constraints of the costs and including the pension obligations. So with that very kind of somber note, I will turn it over to Dr. Radigan, who always has a very upbeat presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Urnel. I'd like to thank the Penrich High School for the boardroom display that is in the other room, that we will have our committee meetings this year. This will be the location of our board meetings. Thank you to the Guth Home and School Association for their donation of 24 Elmos. And I'm pleased to announce that our district applied for the Pennsylvania Team Nutrition Mini Grant, and we were awarded $3,000 grant, USDA Team Nutrition. So congratulations to those who applied. And as Dr. Urnel said, even though it's the summer, some exciting news is still happening. Even after graduation, our students still continue to represent our district with honor. Senior Matthew Harmon Jr. was a member of the Tech School Precision Machining Team that earned a silver medal in the Automated Manufacturing Competition at the National Skills USA event a few weeks ago. In addition to Matthew, the other team members were actually seniors from Quakertown, Jason Crawford and Dylan King. What is interesting is that all three young men are already working in their chosen field. Matt is with Lehman Precision LLC. So I'm very happy for Matthew and the folks at the Tech School. This is huge for them, especially considering the high priority President Obama and Governor Corbett have placed on automated manufacturing in Pennsylvania and in America. When Vern Wagen cellar, who's in charge of the Tech School, sent me the note about Matthew's accomplishment, he mentioned the importance of computer numeric control technologies and how we tend to think of milling machines that make tools and other machine parts, and that, of course, is accurate. But as he said, we don't always consider the bigger range of services that this technology provides. So consider the demand today for artificial joint replacements, such as hips and knees. Those artificial joints are being fabricated using the technology that our students are actually learning at the Tech School. So between miniaturized CNC milling machines and the technology of 3D printing, Vern said he sees a future where CAD-based designs are purchased and delivered wirelessly to portable machining devices that will fabricate the needed part on the spot. So to quote Vern, Upper Bucks County is leading America into the future. I also received a note from Ray Ott, one of the assistant principals at the high school, and he happened to have a conversation with Tim Abruzzo, who graduated in 2012 and is now at the Naval Academy. Tim was on leave, and he stopped by to visit Coach Barron's basketball camp yesterday. Tim is a member of the basketball program at Navy and receives significant playing time as a freshman after spending a year at the Naval Academy Prep School. One of the things Tim shared with Ray was how well-prepared he thought he was by the math and science programs at the high school. He made the comment that a lot of the guys who went to some elite private schools struggled in some of strenuous math and science courses that they were required to take, while he thought he was well-prepared. So another reason to be Penrich proud. And finally, who knew that recycling juice products or pouches could bring back big bucks? Well, apparently, the students at Grass know that. In case you missed Kyle's story in the intel recently, this past year, Grass students recycled more than 18,000 Capri Sun Juice Packs and earned about $3,000, which will be used to buy a pair of buddy benches for the school. It is the third year of the program, and points from previous years were used to purchase bushes that spell out the school's initials on the front landscape. Christina Scochi says the program has helped unify the school while getting students interested in recycling. So congratulations to the students and staff at Grass, and thank you, Kyle, for bringing this wonderful story to our community. And that's my report, Dr. Urnel.
Thank you. At this point, we'll move to the committee reports, and since we have several, actually three, important appointments in terms of people, personnel, I would like to ask Mr. Demming to do the personnel committee report first, and with apologies to Mrs. Miller, and I assume she will hold off of her activities committee report.
Thank you, Dr. Urnel. Our committee met on the 23rd. I have six motions, and I'm going to read them, and I'm going to ask for a second on all of them so we can save you time. We have another meeting following this one. The first motion is to approve the independent contractor agreement for the district school position. The second is to approve the independent contractor agreement for the district school dentist. The third is a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement for the district school dentist for student dental exams. And the fourth is a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement for medical coverage at-home football games and scrimmages. And the fifth is a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement for the staff development, excuse me, I'm going to leave it. So that's the four, and I'd like a second to those four motions.
Do we have a second? Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mrs. Miller, to approve the motions in terms of independent contractor agreements.
Dr. Urnel, I would like to say that all of these independent, these contracts have been reviewed by Kelso.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from board members on these issues? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Demming?
Motion number five is to approve the independent contractor agreement for staff development consultant with Deborah Berkey as that consultant. And the sixth is a motion to approve an addendum to the Source for Teachers Substitute Service Agreement as we discussed earlier, July 23rd.
Do we have a second to those two motions?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mr. Casper, to approve the two motions, independent contractor for staff development and the extension of the Source for Teachers Substitute Service Agreement. Comments or questions from board members? If none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Demming?
Motion seven, eight, and nine, I will do individually because they're pretty good people in this, very good people in this district. The first is a motion to appoint Dr. Matthew Cole as the principal at North Middle School effective upon his earliest availability.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mrs. Mr. Thompson, to approve Matthew Cole as the new principal at North Middle School. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Demming?
Motion number eight is to approve, is to appoint Mr. Matthew D. Smith as the principal at Guth Elementary effective on the earliest availability.
Do we have a second to that motion? Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mrs. Yardley, to approve Mr. Smith as the new principal at Guth Elementary School. Comments or questions from board members? If not, Mr. Smith, I will say, as chair of the Academic Performance Committee, we will miss you and hate to let you go, but I am sure that the students and faculty and staff at Guth are the winners in this event, and best wishes in that new job. Any other comments?
I would like to make one more comment, and then, once this is done, we give Mr. Smith a round of applause. He's done well with her.
Okay, let's take the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
The last motion is to appoint Ms. Jennifer Tesco as the K-8 humanities, excuse me, put my teeth back in, humanities and language arts supervisor effective on her earliest availability.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt, to approve Mrs. Ms. Tesco as the humanities, language arts supervisor. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Demming?
Dr. Urnel, I believe both of these two people are here. I'd like them to stand so that the audience can see them in person.
And if either of you or both have something to say, we would certainly appreciate hearing it.
I just want to, I do want to thank Dr. Radigan and the board for the time that I've had in district office. It's been an absolute pleasure. I've been thrilled to be part of district administrative offices and what we've accomplished the last, it's almost eight years, I can't believe it's been that long. I then want to say that I couldn't be more thrilled to be joining Guth Elementary. One of the things that I've learned in my time here is that Guth is an amazing place, and I'm just so happy to be joining the Guth community to work with the teachers. It's outstanding, the teaching staff, the professional staff, the certified staff and non-certified staff. We got to see some of them today or this evening. And then obviously, I really look forward to doing everything I can to make sure that the 514 students at Guth Elementary have the best experience possible in the coming year and in years to come. So thank you very much. I really appreciate this opportunity.
Hi, everyone. I just want to take a moment to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm very excited to join the Penrich community as the curriculum supervisor for humanities and language arts. I'm looking forward to working with all of you as we strive to provide our students with the best educational opportunities. I feel that my past experiences have prepared me and led me to this position. I'm honored to share these experiences and my passion for lifelong learning with the Penrich community. Thank you again for your time tonight. I very much look forward to working with you and to getting to know all of you very soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Smith, for putting your support group plan out in the audience. Next, we will revert back to the normal order, and so the next meeting will be the Activities Committee, and that's Mrs. Miller.
We met as a community in the hall July 23rd. I have my motions to put before the board tonight. The next meeting is scheduled for September 10th, 7:30 in the district office.
Thank you. I believe I did not allow Mr. Demming to note that the next Personnel Committee is also scheduled for September 10th. At this point, the next one is academic performance. We did meet as part of the committee meetings on the 23rd of July. There are two motions that I have to put before the board tonight. The first has to do with a new title that is proposed. This is for the Advanced Placement Physics Course. It's entitled Fundamentals of Physics. The existing book is a decade old or more, and apparently those copies that we have are falling apart. So this is not only needed because of the wear and tear on textbooks, but also because of the updating of the curriculum in this general area, as you may know. As you may know, the AP courses are largely, the content is dictated by, and books are selected not by the district per se, although we can select from the books that are available, but it has a very specific curriculum. So I'd like to ask the board to make the motion to approve the purchase of this new book in physics, called Fundamentals of Physics. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Yernell, seconded by Mrs. Yardley, to approve the physics textbook. Comments or questions from board members? Not all those in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries eight-zero. Second motion is largely for fun free, but for fun free or not, it's a part of the school code, and every year, we are required between the beginning of April, April 1, and the end of July, July 31st, to authorize a general adoption of the district's educational programs and all the textbook titles previously approved by the Board of Directors. That's why this is here tonight, and I move that we make such an authorization for the general adoption. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Yernell, seconded by Mr. Demming, to approve the general adoption authorization. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries eight-zero. The agenda says that the next academic performance committee meeting is scheduled for the 18th of August. That meeting has been canceled, and it will be held September 15th. Thank you, Mr. Smith. So in lieu of the August meeting, there will be a September meeting. The next area is facilities, and that would be Mr. Casper.
Thank you. Tonight, we have three motions. Firstly, facilities met as part of the committee of the hall on July 23rd. The first best motion is to approve the following obsolete items. So that would be motion one, A through HI two. We went over these in a committee meeting, and there were no questions about any of the items. At that time, I think I should just ask now if anyone has questions at this point. Now we refer to them as lots, that's our new terminology. So that's my first.
We have a second. Moved by Mr. Casper, seconded by Mr. Demming, to approve the obsolete items listed in A through I. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Casper?
I think they may have said H.
Yes, but it's I.
Second motion is to approve the installation of a high school tile mural as a class project.
Do we have a second to that motion? Moved by Mr. Casper, seconded by Mrs. Yardley, to approve the installation of a large mural, actually, a tile mural. Comments or questions from board members? If not, this is an eight-year project by our art students, literally hundreds of them, and quite an undertaking. Hopefully, it will make this building a little brighter and more interesting, at least from an art perspective. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Casper?
Third motion to approve the, another mural, the Diaglour Parent Teacher Group Project. It's an external painted mural, and this motion is made pending approval from East Rock Hill Township.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Casper, seconded by Mrs. Yardley, to approve the Diaglour Elementary mural. Comments or questions from board members?
I did have one comment. I know they were, wanted to have this done by the time school resumed, and I think Mr. Lawford said he's got the wheels turning on that, but they're not, we're not going to have, so we're going to do this sort of pending approval of East Rock Hill as soon as they can get to it.
Board members are aware of this pending issue, okay? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Casper?
Thank you. The next facilities committee meeting is scheduled for August 11th.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Sarnese.
Finance committee agenda is also part of the July 23rd meeting. So we have several motions. The first is a motion to approve the contracts as listed, A through F. I believe they were all discussed at that meeting, but there, and then there was some additional information sent to board members, so hopefully, there's no further questions. So I make the motion to approve A through F.
Do we have a second? Moved by Mr. Sarnese and seconded by Mr. Thompson, to approve the contracts listed A through C. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Sarnese?
I will do motions two and three. They are to approve settlement agreements, 2014-39, 2015-01, and 2015-02.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sarnese and seconded by Mr. Thompson, I believe. Thank you. Comments or questions from board members on these two agreements?
Three.
Three, I'm sorry. Two motions, or two motions listed, three, thank you. If not, all those in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Sarnese?
The next is a motion to accept and approve award bids as listed for the musical instruments, A and B.
Thank you.
And, I'm sorry, MC, the paper bidding.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sarnese, seconded by Mrs. Yardley, to approve the music instruments, music equipment, and the retrographic paper, the like. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Sarnese?
The next is a motion to accept and approve purchase orders for Kronos Support Service Maintenance and Central Minnesota Education Analyst maintenance.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that, acceptance and approval of purchases? Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Moved by Mr. Sarnese, seconded by Mr. Schmidt, to make these approval. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Sarnese?
The next is a motion to approve student activity account requests. There's three to close in item A, and four to renew in item B.
Do we have a second to this student activity account request motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sarnese, seconded by Mr. Thompson, to approve these requests. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Sarnese?
The final is a motion to approve the federal program change in coordinator and E-signer agreement.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Moved by Mr. Sarnese and seconded by Mr. Demming, to approve changes in the federal program. Comments or questions from board members? Mrs. Yardley?
I asked for clarification last week, and there was going to be a recommendation today. I had sent out an email to all board members explaining that this was the E-signer agreement.
Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Sarnese?
The next finance committee meeting is scheduled for August 11th.
Thank you. The intermediate unit, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you. The head of mid, we met at the Doylestown office on July 22nd. We provided a presentation on extended school year 2014, which included providing services for 560 students in center-based sites, camps, and district operator programs, 209 itinerant students, all 13 Bucks County school districts, as well as 20 additional districts, and seven different related services were provided, including PTOT, speech, et cetera. There was also a presentation on the IU's response to the enormous growth of technology throughout Bucks County districts. The IU has positioned itself to quickly respond by providing low-cost, high-quality consultation services, contracts ranging from short-term to long-term projects, and services include onsite emergency technical assistance for hardware, software, and infrastructure failures. The IU's expertise in installing management tools have allowed districts to have cutting-edge systems in place to better manage their computer fleets, how to reduce costs while applying best practices and standards. The IU also provides quantitative services specific to Microsoft SharePoint, a web-based system for storing and sharing files. Also, Dr. Yernell, I'd like to comment on the incident that occurred, I think it was July 15th. A five-year-old student was inadvertently left in the van while the IU was transporting the student from home to a park, Bucks County Association for, I don't know what they call, what does the acronym stand for anymore? The R. Anyway, from, from home to a center base. The student was left in the van for over two and a half hours. The bus driver picked up the student, dropped off, picked up five students, dropped off board, returned to her home, and the child was left in the car and the van was closed. The IU, Dr. Veloso, and Joey O'Carroll handled this aggressively, professionally, and very compassionately. The bus driver was termining for failing to follow, failure to follow protocol. The student, by the way, is okay. She was transported to the hospital. The bus driver was disturbed when she realized what she had done. This was a bus driver that, her resume included teaching, student, assistant teaching, she had all her clearances, there was nothing to indicate, it was just a, just a very unfortunate accident. But it has been resolved, the student is okay, the family is very thankful, and the IU was extremely thankful that everything turned out. Our next meeting is September 16th, at 7:00 p.m. in Doylestown. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is policy review. Mr. Demming?
Well, we have nothing to report, except that our next meeting is September 10th.
Thank you. We'll move to the Upper Bucks County Technical School Committee. Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Dr. Yernell. There was no meeting in July at the Upper Bucks County Technical School. The next meetings are scheduled for August 7th and August 24th, 21st, excuse me, at 7:30 p.m. at the technical school.
Thank you, and I would note that the renovations are underway. I have not actually dawned my hard hat on over there. I intend to do that before the summer's out. Nothing else, just to, you know, find out what's happening. But that will be part of the reason for a second meeting in August, is to have an update on the progress of those renovations. The technology committee, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, we and I have had a meeting, the next committee meeting is to be scheduled by the meeting.
Thank you. And Act 48, Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you. The next Act 48 committee meeting will be scheduled as a meeting.
Thank you. Do board members have any unfinished business? If not, the next thing is new business, and I do have one item that came in the mail very recently, and that is, we, that is the board, have the ability to appoint voting delegates for the PSBA conference, which is in October. And the actual delegate assembly will meet on Tuesday, October 21st. We can appoint as many as three. Unfortunately, the timing on this was not good, in the sense that it needs to be done before July 31st. So I bring it before the board tonight and ask for volunteers, if anyone's interested in doing, Alquarius in particular, going to that conference in Hershey, if they would act as a delegate or delegates from the Penrids School Board. Do we have anyone who's potentially interested in doing this?
I've gone the last two years, I will.
So I don't believe this requires a vote, it simply means that we will have to send the form, and I will give this to Mrs. Cron, so that it can be filled out with your name. And is there anyone else who would care to join, Mr. Thompson?
It's Tuesday, October 23rd, you say?
21st.
21st.
Tuesday, the delegate assembly itself meets on Tuesday, October 21st. And thank you for going in our, the act, I'm sure there will be active discussion on the numbers of subjects at that meeting. So thank you. Anyone else have new business that they'd like to discuss? Mrs. Yardley?
Well, it's not, it's under the new business announcements. I just want to announce that there's a change to the ad hoc fundraising committee meeting date. It's going to be August 13th.
Okay. Mrs. Cron, would you vote that, please, and anyone who's interested in attending that? I believe it's open attendance, yes?
Yeah, it's, it'll be just like any other committee meeting.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? If not, I will go to announcements. The next school board meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 25th to 2014. It will be at 7:30, and it will be in this room, LGI 3.3. The executive sessions were held on July the 7th for the purpose of negotiations and personnel matters, and on July 23rd, the purpose of personnel matters. There has already been one executive session tonight before this meeting, and there will be another after the meeting, and those two will be for the purposes of personnel matters and negotiations. At this point, we're back to comments or questions from guests. If you would, please come to the microphone, give us your name and municipality of residence, if you would, please.
My name is Mary Lou Tikowski, and I live in Percasie. And I apologize for not knowing all the, you know, ways that you do things, because I'm usually teaching a class on Mondays, and I have the board meetings during the school year. But I was just wondering, when you have the executive board meetings, does that information come out to in the school board meetings then?
Typically, ma'am, it does not, because the Sunshine Act, which requires most meetings of the board to occur in a public setting, has exceptions. And one of the exceptions is to discuss privileged or confidential matters in executive session on a confidential basis. And some of the reasons that a school board can have a meeting in executive session is to discuss a confidential personnel matter. So if they're talking about a particular employee, obviously, that employee might not want that conversation to occur in public. If they're talking about a particular student, same thing. If they're talking about collective bargaining or negotiations, they can do that in private. If they're talking about potentially acquiring land, that's, that's another topic that the board needs to discuss in executive session. So there's this general recognition that the board has to discuss some things in private, and when it does that, many times, that information then doesn't become public until such time as the board has to take a formal vote, like when it actually ratifies the collective bargaining agreement, or when it takes some particular formal action with respect to an employee. Does that answer your question?
I think, like, in part, I'm, I also am a teaching assistant at South Middle School. So obviously, I have, you know, an interest in the contract information, since we, our formal contract ended in 2013.
Right, and, and just as-
And I just want to know-
Right, and just as your meetings on your side with respect to that contract take place in private, for the most part, so it is with the board, when they're discussing, you know, topics that have some sensitivity to them, those, those conversations are allowed under a law to occur in private.
And then, and then when you are done with the executive, you know, your discussions, then you turn that back to our, to us?
The board has to announce the executive session, and just generally, the topics that it discusses, but it doesn't have to state specifically what it discusses. And then, at some point, if as and when the two sides reach an agreement, the formal approval of that agreement would have to occur at an open meeting. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments from the press? I don't see the press, but I could miss them, hope you are. Do you have a comment or a question?
No, I'm just a reporter.
All right. Thank you for identifying yourself. If not, this meeting is adjourned. We will have the executive session, so thank you very much for coming. Next meeting is, as always.